Yeah, well, we can go ahead and get started. We'll start with an invocation which we observed by a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Bajent.
Here.
Clegg.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Sanchez.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
Woodings.
Here.
All present.
And next up, we have minutes from February 1st for approval.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the City Council minutes of the work session and regular evening meeting of February 1st, 2022.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Willetts.
Hi.
Woodings.
Yes.
Bajent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
And next up, we have the reappointment of Michael Ellis to the Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee for a four-year term ending January 2026.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent to reappoint Michael Ellis to the Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee for a four-year term ending January 2026.
Without objection. I saw that Michael Ellis had raised his hand on Zoom. We really thank you for your service and thanks for coming this evening. You're welcome to say something if you'd like.
Yep. I just wanted to say it's an honor to serve the city of Boise. I love living here and love raising my family here. So, thank you for reappointing me and I look forward to serving on the committee for another four years.
Thank you. I love how your little one on cue acknowledged their existence.
Thanks. We've been practicing.
It's great to see you, Michael. Thank you.
It's great to see you too, Elaine.
Take care. Thanks. Consent agenda, all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the amendment will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move approval of the consent agenda with a note that I will be recusing from Resolution 8422. It involves some of my family members.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Bajent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thanks. And now we'll move into ordinances. We just have one on third reading.
Madam Mayor, I move that further reading of ORD 222 be dispensed with and the record reflect that it has been read for the third time in full.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Bajent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 222.
Let's, let's read it first and then I'll have you make a motion.
ORD-2-22, an ordinance CAR 19-00022 are probably located at 3047 South One Way. I'm intending to make classifications of the city of Boise City to change the classification of real property, particularly described in Section 1 of this ordinance from C-1D Neighborhood Commercial with Design Review Overlay to PCD-DA Pedestrian Commercial with Design Review and Development Agreement, setting forth a recent statement in support of such long change and providing effective date.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now I move approval of ordinance 222.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings. Bajent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thanks. And now we will move into new business, the public hearing for this evening. This is an appeal of PUD 21-40, CFH 21121, CVA 21A 2144, Althuras Heights, SUB 21-41. So, we have, it looks like Crystal is joining us for the city. Amy, as the appellant. Ben, as the applicant. I think that this is in the order we, we will go to. And then Nina. Is somebody from Nina on air? I see your hand is raised on Zoom. Perfect. Okay, so you all will go first. And then I've got a list of folks that have signed up to testify. And so if you're online, we'll, we'll go through the list first. And then if we haven't called you, raise your hand. And then I see Helen is here. Good to see you. Anybody else in the room wanted to testify on this but didn't sign this piece of paper? All right. Okay, with that, Crystal, go ahead. Just one moment here. Sorry. We were having a little trouble from that computer earlier today. It eventually worked, but it did take a little while. Okay, now we got it. Madam Mayor, members of the council. Item before you is an appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to approve a conditional use permit for a PUD comprised of eight attached townhomes, a CAT 3 hillside permit, and variances to encroach street side setbacks on 1.06 acres in an R1C zone. An associated preliminary plat for one common and eight buildable lots was recommended for approval and is before you tonight as well. The applicant proposed to construct four attached two-unit townhome buildings across eight residential lots. The common lot will have a public access easement placed over it and trails will be rerouted in order to protect current access to the foothills trail system. The proposal meets the density, height, front and rear setbacks of the zone, and each two-unit structure will utilize the standard five-foot interior setbacks to allow for the grading and retaining walls necessary to develop the property. Through the PUD, the applicant has asked for waivers as shown here. Included with the proposal was a variance to reduce the perimeter street side setbacks on the east and west. The property is flanked on the west by an unopened and unmaintained Sixth Street right of way and on the east by vacated right of way that contains a trail that is maintained by the city as part of the Boise Trail System. In the R1C zone, the street side setback is 20 feet, and as these spaces are public right of ways that were originally allocated for streets, the setback is triggered. The applicant requested a five-foot setback on each side equal to the typical non-street side setback of the zone. The nearest residences are over 80 feet away and will be buffered by roadways, right of way, and proposed landscaping. As outlined in the original project report and previous hearing minutes, the Planning and Zoning Commission found this to be an exceptional circumstance justifying the variance request. The appellant appealed the November 8th, 2021 decision from the PNZ Commission to approve the PUD variance and hillside development permits, and six parties of record in the North End Neighborhood Association submitted memos in support of the appeal. Grounds against the project have been summarized here. As outlined in your memo, the planning team found no evidence suggesting the commission erred in its decision. The planning team finds the commission's decision was supported by substantial evidence and was not arbitrary or capricious. In conclusion, the planning team and Planning and Zoning Commission finds the requests to be consistent with the standards and criteria for approval. As such, the planning team recommends council deny the appeal and approve all applications with conditions. And then two final notes before I cede my time. First, Kane Schaefer and Jason Taylor are standing by on Zoom if you have any hillside questions. And then there may be citizens who are not parties of record to the applications being appealed that may want to testify on the associated subdivisions. So just a heads up on that. And with that, thank you, and I'll stand for any questions. Madam Mayor. Just one question to start off with. Crystal, is this in the historic district? It is in the North End. It's outside of the historic district. Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead. Councilmember Bajent and Hallie Burton.
Crystal, I'm sorry that I now see you again so far away. We were, we had a lovely time briefly while we were in chambers together. But my question is, on the Sixth Street right of way, that one hasn't been vacated. I think I've been up to that area and it doesn't look like that will ever turn into a street. Do we know what the future plans are for, for that Sixth Street right of way? Like, will it be vacated in the future? Or is there some idea to somehow put a street there? Did you have any of that context?
Sure. Madam Mayor and Councilmember Bajent, ACHD has confirmed there are no plans to utilize either right of ways for roadway due to the slope and topography and has actually entered into a license agreement with City Parks for the installation of PED and bike and natural plants. But, and Parks have provided comments and confirmed they have no objections to the project.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton. Thank you, Crystal. Council Pro Tem Woodings asked the question whether it was in the historic district or not, and, and it's not. My question is, since it does border the historic district, I guess I may, maybe I'm making an assumption that the historic district starts right across the street. Is there any, is there any grounds as far as violating any historic guidance just because it's close or next to? I feel like we've run into that on a past application where it may affect the historic integrity of the neighboring places.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, Councilmember Hallie Burton, there are no codified restrictions on areas that are outside the historic.
And Madam Mayor, just a quick follow-up there. Crystal, across the street, is that where the historic district starts? So like, if this was on the other side of the street, it would be in the historic district?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton, that is correct.
Great. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Crystal. One of the appeal grounds is that massing is out of character with the neighborhood. As I read the record, one of the reasons that this was grouped into four buildings of two units each was to better match the massing that's typical in this neighborhood. Could you comment on that? Was, is that right? Is that what I read?
Madam Mayor, Council President Clegg, that is correct. The intention was to group them together so as to avoid their row house look.
And then, secondly, the series of driveways has also caused some concern. It is quite steep, I assume. If this is, if the appeal is denied tonight and this goes forward, the applicant will have to get a grading permit to ensure that those driveways actually meet our grading standards. Is that also correct?
Madam Mayor, Council President Clegg, that is correct.
Okay. And then finally, just in response to Councilmember Bajent's concerns, I did request that the Parks Department share with the Planning Department the recently executed license agreement with ACHD on the Sixth Street right of way. And it does indeed include the entire right of way for pedestrian and bicycle use.
Any further questions? Okay. Ben, you're up.
Can I miss?
Oh, gosh, yeah. I'm sorry. Amy Mall. I knew that. I had it the right when I was reading from my paper. Sorry about that.
No, no problem. Thank you. Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate the opportunity, appeal. I've learned a lot about city processes in this process, and I've enjoyed reading Blueprint Boise. I didn't realize it was out there. And in digging in deeper, it's really, it's really, it's really cool to see that effort by the city and, and what we're planning. And I get to recruit a lot of people to Boise. I've recruited a lot of faculty members. And I love living here. As Mr. Ellis said, it's a wonderful place to live, incredibly livable place. And I, that's what we tell people. I've gotten to work with Clark Kraus, Abibet, bringing people to Boise and love living here, love living in the North End. I'm at 602 West Althuras, just west of that property across the Sixth Street right of way. So kind of at the base there. And infill is really important. Infill is a critical component. We've got a complex housing situation. I know you guys are dealing with that a lot. Infill is really important to that. And so I think adding, developing on this piece of land is a great opportunity. If I could get the next slide, what my concern is, and the reason I'm appealing is when I look at this proposal, it's violating the zoning code 26 times. There are eight lots. Minimum lot width is 50 feet. Those are 33. Minimum lot size is violated eight times. Internal side setback is set at five feet. That's set at zero for each one of these. And the street setback, that code is asked to be very, the variance on that twice on both the West End and the East End. So, yeah, it depends how you want to count, but I look at this as violating code 26 times. I really appreciate all of Crystal's help and the, and the planning and development memo. And I want to kind of go into some detail in what's in there and kind of how I look at the situation. So if I could have the next slide. Some alternate, maybe alternate interpretations or a different way to look at the memo and what is said there. So, look at street side setback. In your packet, page 827, 828. And what it says is, as outlined in the project report, Planning and Zoning Commission found there would be an exceptional circumstance and hardship justifying the variance request as the adjacent right of ways are either vacated or undeveloped. In the November 9th meeting, PNZ Commission stated, there are exceptional circumstances which justify the granting of variances to reduce the east and west street side backs below 20 feet. While both sides are flanked by public right of way, they are currently unutilized. And there are no plans for either right of way to be extended or developed as public streets due to topography of the area. I didn't actually realize there was a discussion with the parks that gone as far as it had. And that word, unutilized, irks me probably more than it should. It's probably not a logical or responsible response, but that right of way is used. It's used by the robins and the screech owls and the hummingbirds and the squirrel. I'm not too worried about squirrels. And they'll be fine. But that right of way is, is utilized. I don't think the only use we should consider is if it's covered with asphalt and concrete. So that's, I don't understand why there would be a hardship or an exceptional circumstance just because we haven't paved it. And in fact, if the chickadees could testify tonight, they'd actually ask you to leave that setback there so they can have their home. In addition, I'll have a, and this is a little more personal, I'll have a 30-feet-tall, three-story, 60-feet-wide concrete wall, 15 feet closer to my house and my office window, if that's, if that variance is granted. Looking at buildable area, the, again, in your packet, page 829, Planning and Development Memo states, actual buildable area of the site is limited by the topography and will already require significant grading. With the associated conditions of approval, the commission found that the variance would not be in conflict with Blueprint Boise nor be materially detrimental to the public health, safety, welfare, or injurious to the property improvements of other property owners. And with the overall size of the subject area has sufficient dimensions to accommodate eight standard-sized lots for the R1C zone, the steep topography of the lot makes approximately 0.4 acres of the one-acre subject property more difficult to develop. So one way I look at that is it's 0.6 acres of buildable width. And that's where that density is much higher than what we would typically allow on 0.6 acres. Again, a different way of looking at it, but that density of using units, that massing is very uncharacteristic for the North End and for the neighborhood. Again, I don't see how exceptional circumstances or hardship applies. This lot is this lot. It was that way when the developer bought the property. Little more detail, page 831. Co-chairman Schaefer from the PNZ Commission, these structures are not in the historic overlay district. I am hopeful that the applicant will continue to explore his materials and find materials that are appropriate for the surrounding homes. Be that as it may, these are brand-new structures going in, and they're never going to look like structures that are over 100 years old. So that's just the condition we're in in this part of the city. You know, if these lots were in the historic overlay district, we'd be having a much different conversation. There's a 10-year-old house a half block from this property. It fits imperfectly. You know, you, you're in, when you drive around the North End, you see new, new properties that are built to fit in. So I don't agree that you can't build a new property that fits into the area. If you look at the city's land use, guidance documents, we get clear direction to protect the integrity and character of existing neighborhoods, particularly city-designated historic districts. And regardless of location, Blueprint Boise requires the development must be compatible and respect, respectful of the existing neighborhood landlords and their investments in their properties. The proposed development is not compatible, nor does it match the character of the existing neighborhood. Okay, and finally, the open space and trail system. 24 of the violations of zoning code are represented as waivers as part of the PUD process. PUD, that's Boise City Code, Section 110304, Section 7, for PUD says, "To provide an opportunity for land development that preserves natural features, allows provision of services, and provides common open spaces or other amenities not found in traditional lot-by-lot development." That 0.4 acres that is left open is steep. There's no trails on it. It's not a normal backyard. And the way this is developed, there isn't even access to the backyard. If the side setbacks are not granted, the trails, that's where the trails are, and the trails actually go up above the property. So I don't see the 0.4 acres as enough of a common open space that qualifies for the PUD. I kind of look at this as, look, I drive a Prius. It gets much better gas mileage than the other cars on the road. So I should be able to drive 50 in a 35 and skip the stoplights. And as you might imagine, the Boise Police probably don't agree with me on that. One of the challenges of looking at, at this and looking at the drawings and looking at the property for me was sort of understanding, what is this going to look like? What is this massing going to look like? So I drove around the weekend and tried to take some pictures and tried to come up with a representation. So if I get the next slide. This is the corner of Sixth and Althuras, Helen's house, and the greenhouse is the one that was built 10 years ago. And then the other one, you're looking sort of at that corner, the property would be on the left of this picture on the upper right corner. And so I tried to find a property that is similar to these units. A, a building that has two townhomes in it that is three stories high. What I found was on the corner of 36th and Hill Road, what is known as the Dog Bone. So if you go to the next slide, I took a picture of those townhomes. I scaled this to match the scaling of the picture below, not to at least an A-, not, there's a little probably not perfection here. But these are scaled to the same sort of size range as what is below. And that's what it looks like. It looks like the, the same piece of very dense front in, right across the street from the historic zone. So if I go to the last slide, I don't think the PUD code was created to circumvent zoning requirements. I don't think that's why it was created.
Madam Mayor, time.
Okay, thank you. And I, for me, the presence of a quarter of 0.4 acres of steep, unbuildable, open space is not enough reason to violate code 26 times. As a resident of the city, I'd like to see a code-compliant project that will honor the character and integrity of our neighborhood, including the abutting city-designated North End historic district. Thank you for the time.
Any questions for the appellant?
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Amy, when you talk about the side setback variances, as I'm reading the map, I only see two variances on side setbacks, and those are the two outside. So when you count the 26, does it include all of the side setbacks?
What, what I'm counting is because it's a townhome, is you take that unit, if they were separate homes.
Okay.
Right? So this is zoned R1C. Yeah, so I'm counting that five to zero there.
That are attached. Okay. You do know that our code does allow attached duplexes on every single family lot.
But I think the duplex then has different requirements, doesn't it?
Yeah.
And this is not fulfilling, that I know of, fulfilling those duplex requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for Crystal. And, Crystal, we, we've established that this is not in the historic district. Will this application be subject to design review or has it already gone through design review? Madam Mayor, Council Pro Tem Woodings, this is not in a design review zone. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Members of City Council, Ben Semple with Rodney Evans and Partners, 1450 West Banock Street, Boise, Idaho, 83706. Appreciate the time to represent the project. Yep, that's the right slide. The project is located 1702 North Sixth Street, is comprised of seven parcels totaling 1.062 acres within the R1C zone. It's also in the hillside overlay. The applications received for a Category 3 hillside development permit, planned unit development, and variance all received unanimous approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission on November 8th, 2021. The subdivision application, which is after the appeal, was also recommended unanimously for approval. All applications were supported and recommended for approval by City of Boise Planning Staff as well as by the Public Works Hillside Review of the preliminary plans and documents submitted. We are, we were also in agreement with all terms and conditions of the approval contained within the staff report. All technical requirements of the applications were fulfilled, and justification for the approvals was deemed appropriate to grant said approvals of the applications. We do understand some of the neighbors do not agree with the approval of the project as stated in the, in their appeal. And while we do recognize that there will be an impact from the project, as any project has on adjacent properties, the project meets or exceeds the standards to be granted an approval. As stated previously, the city determined that all technical requirements of the Category 3 hillside development permit, PUD, and variance requests were fulfilled, and that all required documentation, reports, preliminary plans, and subsequent City of Boise and Ada County Highway District reviews of, of the application materials were considered to be justified with facts, circumstances, and substantial evidence. The next slide, please. When proposing this project, care was taken to ensure compliance with zoning densities as well as additional requirements and regulations applicable to the property. Project is proposing a planned unit development, which is supported in code and is recognized in the appellant's letter as this project does provide an opportunity for land development that preserves natural features, allows provisions of services, and provides common open spaces or other amenities not found in traditional lot-by-lot development. This is done by clustering the buildings on the property in an area that has already been disturbed by previous uses on the site. This project will actually improve the condition of the hillside that is currently eroding and sloughing due to a long-term lack of maintenance by previous owners. This allows for the native hillside above to have limited impact, which preserves the natural features and sets aside open space. The open space is also contained within a common lot, which will have a public access easement placed over it, ensuring public access in perpetuity. The owner actually intends to donate this to the city if it works for the city, if it's congruent with other pieces that could be considered public. But regardless of that, it will have a public access easement recorded in the CCNR's HOA documents, everything. The addition of a trail reconstruction is a benefit and amenity not only for the proposed development, but the general public as well. The PUD was considered appropriate and consistent with Boise City Code, not only due to the standard approval criteria, but as it provides for multiple opportunities for amenities that are accessible by the general public and not only the future residents of the development. If you can bring up the next slide, please. The appellant is correct that the Fifth Street right of way vacation process did require the owner to maintain a 20-foot right of way for trail access, but did not require them to rebuild or build new trails through that right of way. The develop, the developer of the project is going to reconstruct the trail connection to be in the common lot that is now 20-foot-wide Fifth Street right of way. As you can see in the aerial photo, it does fall substantially on a portion of the property, the northeast corner. This will additionally be extended across the common public access lot in public access lot in order to maintain future connectivity while the main trail at the top of the slope does not fall on the subject property. It is on a separate owner's private property. If that property was ever to redevelop, there's a potential that the trail that is currently there could be blocked or removed. By constructing a secondary trail across the common public access lot that is associated with this project, the trail connectivity is protected regardless of what the adjacent property owner decides to do. This also allows for an uninterrupted connection from the Fifth Street and Altarus intersection to the North End Native Plant Reserve further to the north as well as to the Sixth Street Right Of Way to the west. The project developer had initially expressed desire to vacate a portion of the Sixth Street Right Of Way as that right of way is currently unmaintained by ACHD. ACHD indicated that the right of way would not be opened, maintained or redeveloped as a public street due to topographic constraints and the lack of connection to other right of way. I confirm this with City Boise Public Works as well. Additionally, the developer will be, sorry. The developers informed that the city was interested in purchasing or developing that portion of the Sixth Street Right Of Way as an informal trailhead for the trails to the north. So the developer made the decision not to pursue that vacation as their proponents of the trail system around their property. Additionally, the developer will be redeveloping drainage improvements to the Fifth Street Right Of Way as well as upgrading and maintaining landscape improvements to the Sixth Street Right Of Way to reinforce the trailhead and to clean up the area that currently has volunteer trees and vegetation. They have also committed to extended extending detached sidewalk across the Sixth Street Right Of Way, connecting the proposed development sidewalk to the existing sidewalk to the west. This completes an uninterrupted detached sidewalk to the trail access points that will be located within the Fifth and Sixth Street Right Of Way. The developer will be entering into a license agreement with ACHD and/or the City of Boise for the existing portion of the right of way along their western boundary. The extent of that license agreement is still to be determined, but it minimum will include cleanup of the existing right of way area, installation of additional plant material, stormwater facility for public drainage, participation in rebuilding or establishing trail connections for the public, including the easement over the common lot that will be in perpetuity, installation of additional detached sidewalk across the Sixth Street Right Of Way. Due to the lack of true street side frontage and that the rights of way to the east and west are for pedestrian use only, the variance requested for the reduced street side setbacks was approved as an exceptional circumstance. As this does not exist typically in a lot and block layout or the grid layout throughout the north end. The variance was unanimously approved at PNZ. That's not lost on me because variances are not typically approved, let alone unanimously. Regarding the R one C zoning standards, we are actually below the eight units per acre as the density is seven point five three when you take the eight units divided by the one point zero six two acres. While the appellant states that the project is high density and significantly higher than anything in the surrounding area. There are multiple projects, multifamily duplex, triplex and fourplexes within the immediate area within half a mile that approach fifteen units per acre. Can you show some of the pictures? So I just want to point out some of the the homes that are in this area. This is Sherman Hollow. These homes are anywhere from thirty-five feet to seventy feet wide. These ones were getting into the north side of Sherman, which is the same condition that we have on our property. This is not within the historic district. It's north of the of the Sherman Street Right Of Way. So these fall across the street from a historic district. They were held to zero standards because all they had to do was apply for a building permit. Sherman Hollow went through some additional reviews, but the ones on the north side of Sherman between Fifth Street and where Ada comes in. No design review. It was hillside and a building permit.
What was the one before this? Oh, I thought I saw another multifamily in there. Okay, that.
This is a rendering of the project.
This is the rendering of our project.
Oh, gosh. Okay, it was just in the middle. Great, thanks.
Yeah, while the this does not fall within the historic overlay, the developer is intending to use more natural materials, window patterning and design details that will help create townhomes that are cohesive with the nearby homes and previously developed projects in the area. As the property falls within the hillside overlay and wildland urban interface, the materials chosen also have to comply with fire department regulations. Townhomes will be fire sprinkled to help with these requirements, which may allow for more traditional building materials. To touch on lot coverage real fast. We're not in the historic overlay, so we're not, we do not have to comply with a thirty-five percent lot coverage. Although that requirement does not apply to this development, the proposed townhomes have a forty-six percent lot coverage. When you look at it as a lot by lot development, that is three hundred and seventy-two square feet over a thirty-five percent lot coverage. Square footages of each unit are thirty-three thousand two hundred eighty-four square feet. That includes a seven hundred seventy-one square foot garage and twenty-five hundred thirteen square feet of living space. There are other homes immediately in this vicinity, including a few that were shown in pictures by the appellant that approached four thousand square feet of living space. Last thing I'll say is this is a street front rendering of the project. This does not show the detached sidewalks. We didn't have time to prepare that. There will be detached sidewalks. We've made a lot of effort to include street trees. If you go to the last slide, I think maybe be the landscape plan. Okay, thank you. I would stand for questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Go ahead. Madam Mayor, we can't, we can't hear Elaine's question on the. I didn't realize that.
I, sorry Lucy, I didn't realize I didn't have my mic on. So my question is walk me through the variances so I understand them correctly. I know the two side yard variances. Not quite sure I understand the front variances now that we have the detached sidewalk.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg, we're not proposing a variance on the front.
Okay, so there are no front ones.
Yeah, we exceed the twenty foot setback.
Okay, that's I wanted, because I thought I heard you say a front variance and I was concerned because I didn't understand that.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Second question is, what will the treatment be on the western edge at the edge of the what would be the Sixth Street or Right Of Way? Will that be a retaining wall or will it be sloped up to the foot of the building or how will that work?
So, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg, in this rendering, it shows it a little bit. So the that western side, we actually have to cut the existing site down fairly substantially to comply with grading for the driveways. So the first floor of these units is actually completely buried other than the front of it. There's a portion of the second floor that also acts as a retaining wall. So the west side will remain fairly close to what it is now. We will need to do some improvements to it to clean up the grading there and install the roof drain collection system as well as both private and public infiltration facilities here. So really you'll see the top floor, a portion of the second floor, the windows that you can see in this rendering between the two trees there more than likely will be visible. Again, that's approximately eighty feet from the neighbor to the west. We're doing everything we can to really get these into the hill. It actually falls right about where the existing cut line is on that site now. The owner also intends to go out into the Sixth Street Right Of Way to install additional street trees, even though it's not a true street. Clean up the weeds there, get some beneficial plants natives in there working with Boise Parks to to come up with a seed mix as well as a good plant list for within that space.
Right. One last question if I could, Madam Mayor. The pathway system, as I understand what you're proposing is fairly well aligned with the path that is along the Fifth Street Right Of Way today. That there will be a new pathway across the slope within the common area that will connect to the Sixth Street. And will you then also build the connection down to the Sixth Street Right Of Way since there is quite an elevation change between those?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Clegg, yes. So the existing trail that falls within the Fifth Street Right Of Way will be realigned to be fully within that public twenty foot right of way. And then where you see this in this image, it cuts across and connects to that main trail. There's some challenges with getting a trail, but we can traverse that slope, work around the topography and then reconnect it on the west side to that trail system that goes through the Sixth Street Right Of Way, creating an uninterrupted connection there.
And this will be dedicated with an easement in perpetuity?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and then Eric, hello. Eric Hagan with Nina.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilors. Eric Hagan, eight zero nine North Eighteenth Street, North End Neighborhood Association Planning and Zoning Chair. This is a difficult project for us, especially especially for myself as an architect. Nina has an architect and a and a city or a certified planner on the board. And we've actually discussed it amongst the entire Nina board and gotten into consensus to ironically support the project, but also support the neighbors. So we are in support of infill. We'd love to see something actually going into this this site that has been sitting vacant for so long. It's been amazing to watch the neighborhood get organized and come together and get involved basically in unison, providing some very great options or other ways to approach the project. Again, not, no one seems to be against the project at all, just looking at different ways to do it. During the December Planning and Zoning Meeting, the same mayors or the same neighbors along with the Neighborhood Association did get up and speak for well over an hour, raising concerns about this project and Planning and Zoning Commission pretty much went straight to approving it without any discussion or or acknowledgement of the neighborhood concerns. So fast forward, here we are with this appeal. It's it's been made clear by Amy Mall that the character is not congruent with the neighborhood and possibly questionable when it comes to Blueprint Boise. The PUD process is a tricky one to say the least. And we see it used often to produce developments like this. But you have to ask the question of just because you can, doesn't mean that you should. So what we are asking as the neighborhood is just to try to come up with a couple of different ways to approach this. Well, Mr. Sample has raised a couple of examples going up Sherman to Sherman Hollow. A couple of things to note is that those are single family residences and there's only one that is four thousand square feet. And especially when you got up in Sherman Hollow, there's a ten foot side yard setback between these. So there's actually effectively twenty feet between those houses. And these ones are asking for no distance between the two townhomes on one side and then only five feet on the other side effectively separating them by ten feet. So it does provide a much higher density than what you find in the neighborhood. And it does, but historic, but it's not subject to historic and Blueprint Boise does say we need to acknowledge adjacent plan or adjacent uses. And even though it's not historic, it's completely surrounded by historic, excluding the residential lots up the hill, which are effectively out of view or out of sight of this project. A couple quick little comparisons. So Amy Mall had brought up the the duplexes that are up on Hill Street, which is in our territorial, which these are very similar to. There's also been three story townhomes proposed and approved over in the west end of the west end where there's been an overlay zone specifically to densify that property. To densify that part around some commercial zones or micro commercial zones. Altarus and Sixth is neither of those. It's not an arterial. It's not near any kind of micro commercial zone. So the density kind of seems again out of character with the neighborhood. And they have pretty much addresses the number of comments we had in regard that we just want to be able to see a development there, but we want to see a development that's been taken into consideration of the actual neighborhood in which it is going and listens to the neighbors' concerns and looks at a couple of different ways to approach the project to come to the same kind of product.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Just a couple of comments. Eric, I want to thank you for detailing Nina's outreach strategy on this and who you talked to and it's very thorough and I really appreciate it. Also, I'm wondering, where's your cat? Because we really enjoyed your cat last time. They were able to join us.
We had to lock the animals out of the room because they were being too noisy earlier.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to echo Council Pro Tem Woodings sentiments. I really appreciate your efforts to find that third way of honoring all the parties involved. Really appreciate that. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
All right. Good to see you. Thanks for joining us. Now I'll start to go through the list. Helen, come on up. And then Katie, if you want to come next, you're welcome to.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Helen, I'm sorry. Could you just drop your mic a little so everybody on Zoom can hear you? Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. My family and I live in the red historic home that was showed earlier directly across the street from this proposed development. And thirteen years ago, we brought bought our home there purposefully within the North End neighborhood and specifically within the historic district because of the historic integrity and protected character of this neighborhood afforded by the city's pledge to minimize protection of historic and to maximize protection of historic and cultural resources. We have remained confident in Blueprint Boise's commitment to assuring that Boisians can expect a predictable development pattern when making further investments in our home. And to address the earlier questions raised about historical impacts, we do not feel the proposed development upholds these commitments made by the city. The development in proposing four three story modern style duplex units with eight front facing garages at such high density across an entire block fails to protect the historic resource of our and our neighbors' homes and is in no way predictable. This plan does not, as pledged by the city, encourage residential infill that complements the scale and character of the surrounding neighborhood as the buildings are wholly unfitting of the character of this neighborhood. There is no other multiple unit three story housing in this immediate neighborhood and no duplex development with garages directly facing the street, especially not eight of them. Let me be clear, as the others have said, we are supportive of the overall idea of smart infill in Boise, but the proposed development fails to uphold the commitments made by the city to protect residents and does not adhere to actual code. As noted by Amy Mall and others, the project relies on numerous variances and waivers to circumvent policies that were thoughtfully put in place to protect Boise residents from proposals such as this. Just because the site that was purchased is limited by topography to have a fraction of buildable footage out of its acre footprint does not mean the city has to grant variances and waivers to allow a building density appropriate only to a full acre. The developer was aware of that limitation when purchasing the property. Finally, we cannot imagine a worse pedestrian bike and vehicle hazard area, a more dangerous situation than posing eight homes each with numerous cars driving off of and backing out onto Altarus almost sixty times a day into this very busy pedestrian skateboard and bike corridor. We simply don't see how this development can occur in a way that meets any need to protect pedestrian and bicycle safety. Ultimately, the city council has a real opportunity here, as Eric noted, an opportunity to show that it is truly listening to residents' concerns and most importantly, adhering to its own policies to protect residents and their communities rather than deferring to what is best for a developer. Luckily, you have options here. You have thoughtful code to rely on and adhere to. You have the power to deny this proposal until it meets your own requirements and we respectfully ask that you choose to do so. Thank you. Happy to address any questions.
I think we're good. Thanks for being here. All right, Katie.
Chris, do you have my slides?
Can you pull them up? My name is Katie Fight, 1006 North Fifth Street, Boise, Idaho. Thank you very much for the opportunity. To provide some comments in relation to this appeal. First, I believe the developer tonight said that. They were basically cleaning up what was on the site. They're actually digging into the very steep hill, a considerable amount. Many hundreds of truckloads of dirt are going to be hauled away. As far, do you have the slides?
We can pause for a second.
Okay, great. Okay, could you pull up the first slide, please? But I mean, can you click on that? Can't you just? Okay, they're coming up here.
Oh yeah, we can see them.
Oh, you can see them. Okay, great. Okay, a large concern of mine is that many of the images the developer prepared for this project. Misrepresent the steepness of the hill. If you look at this image where there's the black that looks like it's a street. Well, a bunch of that black extends into the adjacent property across the street. We really don't have images that show the jarring contrast. These. Identical townhomes are going to create looming right above Alturas Street. Could you do the next slide? Next. Okay. Here too, we have the hill in the background. Is much steeper than is represented in this image. And this and the previous. Illustration appear to have been taken from a drone hovering somewhere. Above eight or above the houses on Alturas Street. So once again, we do not have the images of what. The pedestrians, the bikers and the neighbors are actually going to see right across from their homes. Next slide. Okay, this is, this is an image taking, taken from the. East side, looking at the slope of the hill. The little white house is right on the corner of Fifth Street. This gives you the, some idea of the hill slope. Next one, please. Okay, this is taken from a trail that was shown in. One of the images the developer showed of the project, looking down. Onto you can see the red house in the very center in the background. That's how steep it is. You can't really see the street. You can't see where these houses are, these townhomes will be because of the steepness. And imagine being down on the street. And what you will see is basically the townhomes and not the hills in the background. Okay, next. Okay, that's another picture from the hill up above, looking down across Alturas Street. Once again, you can see. That the steepness of this site.
Time.
And the next one. Okay, that was the one. Okay. Design review.
Katie, you're at time, so.
Commissioner Safer said there would be design review for this. There wasn't.
Okay. Any questions for Katie? Alrighty. Anyone else here in the room planning on testifying? Come on up, sir.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I have some notes that I prepared for this speech. I was under the understanding that I could hand them to you. So we can be on the same page.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Point of order, I mean, if we could get his name and make sure he's a party of record.
Yes, I'll do that. You, you, yes, you can deliver them to the council president. And then when you're reading your remarks at the beginning, will you please just read your name into the microphone? Thank you. And I'll ask you just to pull up the mic a little bit so that everybody at home can hear you.
My name is Keith Mason. I live at 1702 North Seventh Street. And I was looking at that first picture that I provided. The scale representation of the, of the. The house, the houses that will go there, that I call them double houses because they're under one roof. Just shows that disparity in size. And I just like to reiterate what people have said before me. Predictable, predictable development pattern is part of Boise's. Though. Code. And if you go down the list down, I live at 1702 North Seventh. I have a document there between 1702 North Sixth, 1702 North Eighth, 1702 North Ninth. 1702 North Tenth, 1702 North Eleventh, and 1702, 1702 North Twelfth. And list their respective dates of build and their square footage. You see they, they pale a comparison to the. What is proposed for. 1702 North Sixth. By substantial margin. The. Even though the single family. Residential code allows for townhouses to be put on. This property, the, is the size. Which I think is, is, should be noted. In respect to homes in the neighborhood. And also there is a. Goal two of the planning and zoning housing report is to preserve the historic scale. And traditional character of the North End through redevelopment infill. Like others before me, I don't. Challenge that infill should go in those lots. They are, they have been empty for a long, long time. But it could be. Large, single family homes. Instead of townhomes, sort of double homes. Closer in scale to what is. On the, in the, in the general area. If there's any questions, I will. Field them now. Do you have any questions? I mean.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Are there any questions for Mr. Mason? Good. The papers that you gave us will go into the record. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for coming. All right, I'm going to go to folks that have signed up in advance online. First Maria Minicucci and then Lorenda Williams. Oh wait, this is, these are party records. Are they there?
Madam Mayor, Maria Minicucci is online.
Is not, or is?
Is online, as is Marlene Strong. I don't have anyone else, though.
Okay, Maria, go ahead and then Marlene, you'll, you'll be up next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can, I assume you can hear me?
Yeah, we can. Good to hear you.
Great, thank you. My name is Maria Minicucci. I live at 511 Sherman Street, Boise, O2. Our house is one block south and down slope from the application site. Thank you for considering our comments this evening. Madam Mayor, Council President Clegg and council members. Firstly, I want to express my condolences to the man in council over the passing of Mr. Blisterfelt. I know that you have read the comment letter that I submitted previously. This evening, I want to emphasize a few of our concerns. The site characteristics of the proposal site do not mean that we disregard the principles laid out in Blueprint Boise. The applicant's proposal is a square peg in a round hole, as evidenced by its lack of compliance with Blueprint Boise. ACHD requirements for driveway setbacks from intersections. And the need for endless variances and waivers to wiggle it through the city's planning and zoning requirements. In addition to safety, I'm very concerned about the impact of the proposed development on the integrity and character of the city designated North End Historic District. Existing homeowners have relied on the historic district protections when contemplating investments in our home. We have all invested blood, sweat, tears and lots and lots of money in our homes and by extension in our neighborhood. For instance, our home did not have a foundation or footings when we bought it. I know the council is well aware of the costs associated with putting a foundation under a house. We were new to Idaho and Idaho wages and it was a difficult decision to invest that kind of money. In a house located within a block of five abandoned houses. The historic district designation was a signal from our neighbors and the city that our investment would not be lost to incompatible development. It is important to note that the applicant has options. There are compatible multi-unit properties scattered throughout the North End. This application will not contribute to the need for even remotely affordable housing. No. No amount of sledgehammering on this square peg of an application will make it fit onto the site or complement the character of our neighborhood, historic or not. Any reasonable person would conclude that it will destroy the integrity and character of our corner of the North End Historic District. And will surely lead to future developments seeping into the district proper. I respectfully ask that the council utilize the guidance and authorities in Blueprint Boise and other city documents to deny this application. And to tell the applicant to come back with a new proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. And then Marlene. Oh yeah, we can see you, Marlene.
Okay, let me.
We can hear you.
That's good. I discovered when I became a panelist, I couldn't. Have my testimony on the window, but now I found it. Okay. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Marlene Strong. I live at 1619 North Fifth Street on the corner of Alturas. Directly across the street from the proposed development. Four of the eight units would directly face my yard and I fully support Amy Mall's appeal. This project appears to have invoked the zoning standard of eight units per acre, declared about half of that acre unbuildable. And then asked for 26 variances to cram the eight units onto the reduced footprint. The buildable portion of the lot is equivalent to about three of my own standard lot. Eight units with four bedrooms, each is 32 bedrooms. If the developer had proposed to build an apartment building with 32 studio apartments. Or even 16 two-bedroom apartments on three standard lots. I doubt that planning and zoning would have deemed it in character with the neighborhood. The density of housing is so far out of proportion to the neighborhood that there is no comparison anywhere nearby. But we neighbors are encouraged to accept these eight units as though they were no different from our modest 1 to 2,000 square foot houses on standard lots. We are asked to believe that the inhabitants of these 32 bedrooms will only increase car trips on Alturas by 59 trips a day. Planning and zoning has said that there is no alternative to eight front facing garages emptying onto a narrow street because there is no alley. Well, if the developer had not elected to put eight huge houses on six tenths of an acre, there may have been a way to designate an alley with a mid-block entrance. Instead, planning and zoning accepted. That ACHD ignored its own policy of having driveways be 75 feet away from intersections. And that it's okay for cars to be backing out directly into oncoming traffic on Fifth Street. Or onto the parade of dog walkers and bike riders on Alturas Street. As immediate neighbors, we are told we should be grateful for the common lot. That is really just the unbuildable part of the developer's property. Leaving the backside of these houses undeveloped does not improve the informal trails that exist on the hillside. In fact, it will require the construction of a new trail because the houses will cover existing trails. Madam Mayor and members of the city council, I respectfully ask that you uphold the appeal presented by the neighbors of the proposed development. And require planning and zoning to require the developer propose a project that's an asset to the neighborhood. That complies with existing code Blueprint Boise with the North End Neighborhood Plan. And is an asset to the neighborhood rather than being totally out of character with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from Marlene? Thanks for joining us tonight. Good to see you.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anyone else online?
No, Madam Mayor.
We have nobody else online? Anybody else here? Okay, I'm going to get this order correct this time. Any further questions for Crystal before we head to rebuttals and then you go first?
Madam, Ben Mayor.
Yes.
Council member Hallie Burton.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, yeah, just a couple of questions and I apologize if these kind of got asked already and I missed them. They're not asking for a variance on height. So there is a, like, a single house or a couple of houses could be built that are just as tall as this development. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, council member Hallie Burton, that is correct.
And then my understanding was that. It didn't seem possible in almost any way for there to be an alley that would go behind. And so the garage is facing the front, sort of no matter. Unless, unless maybe there was one, one garage from the side and just one smaller house built on the really large lot. It seems like the only option is to have the garages come off the front because of the topography, or at least that was my understanding in the, in the reading. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, council member Hallie Burton, that is correct.
Great. And then I guess my final question is just that. So we've got eight units that are potentially here. And it could potentially be fewer units. It could be six. That would have the exact same mass, but just slightly smaller variances on the side. And that would be something that would be able to be approved with no variance. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, council member Hallie Burton, yes, it could come back with less density and, but I haven't seen that.
Yeah, I probably didn't ask that very well. I guess my question is, is that I think one of the concerns that I'm hearing from the neighbors, which is certainly a valid concern, is the mass of actually what's being proposed. And what I'm kind of getting from the application and from the requirements is that the mass. Could be almost exactly the same, just with a slightly. Without the variances on the side, the massing would still be relatively significant. And that the variances that we're giving here isn't actually increasing the overall mass of what would be allowed.
Madam Mayor, council member Hallie Burton, I get what you're saying now. And yes, that, that could be correct. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, we will now hear from the applicant first. And then Amy, you go last.
Madam Mayor, members of city council, Ben Semple. So yeah, to respond to a little bit of, of the, the comments from neighbors. There, you're correct, there's no ability to build an alley. There's no access available to the alley. Confirmed with public works that they would find it very problematic to get a road north of Alturas to access any homes. The reason we went with a duplex style and combined driveways was to limit the number of driveways. We could build four standard homes across this lot and they would have four driveways, just like these four driveways would be. I understand the concern about the impact of the historic district. We're. Constantly looking at materials and finishes as a way to. Help this be more cohesive with the historic district. It's difficult when we look at. Wooey requirements, firewise requirements and what that allows us to do or prohibits us from doing. You know, we look at density in the area. We are under the density of other projects that might not be right around the corner, but. You know, I, I did look at a couple of different homes that were within two or three blocks of here and found a few of them that. Living space is north of 4,000 square feet. These are single family townhomes that will be 2,500 square feet of living space plus a two-car garage. We are doing everything we can to help it, again, be cohesive with the neighborhood, knowing that it's not in the historic district. But we are not asking for a height exception. We're under the 35 feet that's allowable and we're within the density of the. The allowed density of this zone. So with that, I would stand for more questions.
Man, I do have a question. Existing on the lot today. I assume as leftovers from houses that might have been there at some point in the past are a couple. I assume as leftovers from houses that might have been there at some point in the past, or a couple of stairways. Could you tell us, will the driveways be below the level of the bottom of those stairways or about at that level? I'm trying to get a sense of the scale and-
Sure. Madam Mayor, Council President Clegg, gather the driveways in order to, for them to achieve a maximum of fifteen percent grade. If we take the twenty-five feet about to get back to those driveways from the back of sidewalk, I would say we're about three feet above, max, maybe two and a half feet above the back of sidewalk. Currently, the, the lot pad that's there right now is about five to six feet, depending on where you are. So the, the lower level will be like any other driveway that you see around these areas in the foothills. Yeah, they are uphill of other homes, but that is kind of the nature of this area.
Okay, so.
So I, I just have a clarifying question, because you said three feet and then, or three and a half and five feet. Is the five feet that current where the steps go up and then it flattens out? And the, these, the driveways would end at three feet, so below, where those steps flatten out? Are you saying above that?
Madam Mayor, they would be below the top of the stairs that exist on the site right now.
And the flat, and then the driveway.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Amy, come on up.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to appeal. And this is a development that maximizes the profit for the developer. And, and we live in a capitalistic society, and I understand that, right? And when I sold the house in the North End, I tried to maximize what I sold it for. That's why zoning codes exist. We want infill here. We want homes here. And we want the code followed. When you look at the density, and when you look up Sherman Hollow, those are single-family homes. The width of those lots is fifty to seventy-five to a hundred feet. Fifty feet is the code. These are thirty-three. If you do the math, and I did, and then Eric told me he couldn't follow it, so I didn't include it. If you say that those lots have to be fifty feet, if you do not grant to the side setback variance, four homes fit, maybe five. So what I ask is that the developer follow the code. That's what I'd like to see here. I'd like to see infill that follows the code and honors the neighborhood. Thank you.
Any questions for Amy? Thank you. All right, before I close this up, is there anything further for Crystal?
Madam Mayor. One last question, kind of thinking about Amy's comments, recent, her most recent comments. If each of these were fifty or sixty-foot lots, each of those lots would be allowed a duplex, is that by our code?
Madam Mayor, Council President Clegg, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? All right, thank you, Crystal. With that, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I think I'm gonna start with a motion. If I get a, a second, I'll explain my motion.
Okay.
I move to deny the appeal of PUD twenty-one forty CFH twenty-one one twenty-one and CVA twenty-one forty-four.
Second. We have a motion in a second, and-
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
You know, this is my neighborhood. I know this lot very well. I've walked these trails a hundred times. I've watched for years, hoping that something would get built here, knowing that at some point in the past, there were probably some relatively large homes up on those lots. Up on top of those stairs that end six feet above the sidewalk. And knowing that in this hillside condition, those would be really tall compared to where the street was. As I look at the evidence that Planning and Zoning Commission looked at, I see no error in their conclusion that these variances are necessary, given the steepness and the topography and the other conditions in this particular location. I also see that by massing these buildings into four buildings with two units each, it, we, it creates a very similar condition as four lots with duplexes. What it does is create the opportunity for homeownership in each of them much easier in today's financing environment than in a duplex situation. That may or may not be what we wish for, frankly. It isn't affordable housing. We desperately need that. But in making these decisions, we can't make the decision based on that. Unfortunately, based, because of Idaho law, we're not allowed to condition based on affordability. I wish we could. What I do see here is an opportunity for at least eight more families to live in this neighborhood. I think it's a great place to live, and I think those families will thrive there. I think the public access and the promise of easement provide some public benefit. And overall, while it may not be the development I would do, if, if I were doing this development myself, it's not one that I can find. Doesn't meet the standards that the Planning and Zoning Commission applied to it.
Madam Mayor, um, I seconded this, and I grew up not far from this lot. I mean, I walked my dog here all the time and always trespassed, of course, going up the stairs and walking around the old stone foundations that were up there and kind of thinking about, what's that? Kind of thinking about what, what would have been there in the past. Always knowing that someone would build something there at some point in the future, and always wondering, when is somebody gonna build something here? And so here we are, and I think that as Councilmember Clegg said, just because this isn't what I would build there, doesn't mean that it's not a really great opportunity for an infill development. I read through the record thoroughly. I really think that the Planning and Zoning Commission did a great job in their deliberation. They really considered the facts. They considered the particular circumstances of this. They made sure that they were considering all of the evidence in their approvals, and I can't find any error in any of their deliberations. And so that's why I'm supporting the denial of the appeal.
Madam Mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
I, I agree with my colleagues on everything. The only other thing that I would add is that, you know, you know, most of the arguments were about sort of facty stuff, whether the Planning and Zoning Commission construed the facts correctly, and I agree that there's no error there. The other argument was that the variance process is being used to prevent enforcement of zoning. And that's an argument that the Planning and Zoning Commission applied, applied the, like, the wrong law, deviated from a legal process. And I don't, I just want to put in the record on our motion that I don't agree with that argument because the varying process is part of the code, too. So we have to do it all. And then when I go look at how the Planning and Zoning Commission made the various decision, I don't see an error there. So I'll be supporting the motion.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I don't have a tremendous amount to add here. I'll be supporting the motion as well. I don't find any error in the decision that planning and zoning made. I do understand the concerns of the, of the neighbors. It is a beautiful area over there, and it is great to be able to look straight across and see empty foothill space right there. I mean, people have community gardens right outside, you know, their front yards there. So I, I absolutely get it, and I understand. I also live in an area where a similar development like this just took place, but instead of it being eight different units, it was one gigantic, almost four thousand square foot unit, a few of them, and I walk by it all the time, and I just think how sad it is that there aren't more families who have the ability to live that close to an incredible neighborhood, the foothills, and House Rat's old incredible garden that she has up there in the natural area that I think Council President Clegg actually has probably been to more than a hundred times. And so I think that folks are real familiar with this area, and they understand the value that it has. And I do think that there is value in, in making a spot where multiple families can live. And so I think it's, it's tough, but I think what could be in there may not necessarily even be a better option.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I think that that's it. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Willetts.
Aye.
Woodings.
Yes.
Bajin.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you all.
Yeah, there is also a subdivision associated with this application. So I would also move that Alturas Heights sub twenty-one dash forty-one Boise City Preliminary Platte at seventeen oh two North Sixth Street be approved.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Can I correct that your prior comments stand for this one as well?
What's that?
Your prior, prior comments stand for this one as well. All right, Clerk, will you call the roll?
Willetts.
Aye.
Woodings.
Yes.
Bajin.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, if there's nothing else to come before the council?
Madam Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Host? All right, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Good night to those online.